I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Program and Zoning Commission to order. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda for June 4, 2013. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Staff, everything's good?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on May 7, 2013. Any amendments, corrections to those minutes?
Do we accept the minutes as published?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those pass staff report, or excuse me, financial report?
We do not have a financial report in the packet, so we'll just give that next month, if that's all right.
Sounds good. Next on our agenda is oral presentations. This is for anybody in the audience that'd like to speak, for anything that's not on our agenda tonight, please come to the podium, name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda items. First item on our agenda is a public hearing for a rezone. This is a request by Golden Acres Retirement Village Corp. to rezone 8.33 acres from M1 Light Industrial District to R3 Multi-Residence District for the purpose of legalizing the existing non-conforming mobile home park generally located along Butternut and Hazelwood Lanes just south of West Airline Highway. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 24, 2013." Can I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved, Gustafson.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against the request, we ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself with name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report? Sir, we'll have a minute after the staff report to address the issue. Thanks.
This is Western with staff. The land is shared ownership by all 28 owners. They're attempting to rezone the land to residential due to the recent classification of the site to commercial for taxation purposes. The site is legal manufactured home park in an industrially-zoned area. The site is located south of West Airline Highway and north of Highway 218. The surrounding land uses are zoning. To the north is M1, south is M1, west is M1, and east is all M1 Light Industrial. The actual uses to the north are industrial, to the south is vacant, and to the west is residential, and to the east is industrial. The Golden Acres development has existed since the early 1960s, prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance adopted in 1969. The 1947 zoning ordinance did not address mobile home or manufactured home parks. The rezoning of the land could be an impediment to further industrial development on adjacent land. Typically, industrial and residential uses should not be located next to each other for reasons of noises, traffic, safety, et cetera. This use has existed in this area next to several industrial uses for many years without any known ongoing complaints or concerns. The comprehensive plan and future land use map designates this area for mixed commercial, medium-to-high-density residential, professional offices, compatible commercial. The area in question is zone M1 Light Industrial and is surrounded by M1 Light Industrial. This is shown as a primary growth area, and it would not appear to be compatible use based on existing industrial uses in the area. Now, the area in question is zone industrial for several miles to the east and west and immediately to the north and south. Comprehensive plan, future land use map shows a large amount of land dedicated to industrial development due to existing businesses in proximity to the Waterloo Regional Airport. This area was shown on the map for mixed commercial due to the existence of the current residential uses in this area. Staff does not support residential uses in industrially-zoned areas as there are typically quality-of-life issues that arise due to the conflicting uses of the two different districts. The rezoning of this land to residential could negatively impact further industrial development, as new industries will not want to be located next to residential and have potential complaints of noise, truck movements, truck traffic, hours of operation, et cetera. The applicants state that they are attempting the rezone due to the reclassification of the commonly-owned site from residential to commercial for taxation purposes by the Black Hawk County Assessor. In conversations with the assessor's office, it is not the zoning, but the primary use of the property that dictates the classification of property for taxation purposes. The rezoning of the land, continued use of the land as it is today would not appear to change the taxation. Therefore, it would not appear logical to rezone the land for the purposes they described, only to have a successful rezone not achieve that purpose. Staff recommends denial for the following reasons. The request to rezon the property in question from M1 Light Industrial to R3 Multi-Family Residence District would not appear conducive to continued development of this area. Also, the request to rezon the property would be allowed by the future land use map, but not for the reasons stated for this rezon. It would not follow smart-growth planning principles to encourage residential uses in industrially-zoned areas due to the potential conflicts such as noise, truck traffic, et cetera. The rezoning of the land would not appear per the application to make any change to the primary use of the property and therefore not change the criteria used for classification for taxation. As this is the specified purpose of the rezoning request, it would not appear logical to rezon the land for reasons that will not change the stated goal.
Are there any questions for staff? Questions for staff. At this time, anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against the rezon request, please feel free to come to the microphone, name and address, please.
My name is Gerald L. Gardner, 2929 Jordan Street, Waterloo, Golden Acres Mobile Home Retirement Village. And we, he's got some pretty good arguments, except that the assessor either by mistake or on purpose changed our residential classification to commercial and therefore would have sent our taxes even higher than they were already. And if we don't change it, it's our perception that this, she, or the assessor, will change that classification to commercial. If we don't contest it in review, then we're going to be charged taxes at the commercial rate. We'd like to get it set at residential by the zoning commission. We believe we're residential, and we're that use right now, but she, but the assessor changed it to commercial on one of our assessment, reassessments, so we had to go to the review board and have it changed. But what's going to stop her from doing it again and then again and again? We want to change, we would like to change it to residential by the commission and designate it residential until somebody commercial buys us and moves us out. And I'm here to entertain any questions about it.
This is Anderson with staff. So you've spoken with the assessor?
Our lawyer has.
And they said that they changed your classification because of the zoning?
Um, the, I don't know that she, that the assessor said that, but that's the paper that, in our reassessment, our reassessment was commercial.
And I did see that the proposed value and the proposed classification changed to commercial, as you described.
Yeah.
I just, we spoke, staff spoke with the assessor's office, and I mean, they said it's the primary use of the property. They didn't go into more detail as to why the primary use of the property was being considered commercial now. Our concern was, you could rezon it residential, but if they, being the county assessor's office, still believes the primary use of the property qualifies as being commercial, your rezoning it has no effect on that.
We, we contest that we are not, we are a retirement cooperative. We, we don't have any commercial businesses allowed on our, our property. We have a small meeting room and 28 retired people that if they change us to commercial as far as cost, they're going to drive us right out of there. We can't afford it. We barely can afford $8,222 now. And we were hoping that if it was changed to residential, we wouldn't have to worry about the next assessor changing us to commercial and our taxes doubling from there again.
Mrs. Gustafson, if you put the map up of the proposed change, it was on up earlier, where it shows the red square. It appears that the property in question is right in the middle of the development. So is this, are those homes all around this part of the property that is now being questioned as whether it's commercial or residential?
Yes, there's 28, 28 homes along, along the outside, and then there's homes right down the middle to the, to the, to the meeting room and...
And is that the meeting room that is in that, in that middle square?
It's in right in the middle, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so if that's a meeting room, and all it's used for is for occasional meetings or family gatherings or those kinds of things?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
I don't understand how that can be looked at as anything other than residential. A mobile home park is commercial, I see.
In the assessor's eyes, right?
Right. So right, so right now, you don't pay taxes on a per-house basis, you just pay it on the land value?
Each individual mobile home pays, pays separate taxes. Our, if you, if you have a garage, that's taxed separately by the assessor. Our mobile homes are taxed separately as a mobile home.
So they're licensed, though?
Licensed, right.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that's the correct verbiage.
This is Whitehead, but you get one separate tax bill for your parcel? Do you have one parcel?
The 8.33 acres for the corporation, our nonprofit corporation owns the 8.33 acres that is classified as assessed, and we each own, most of us own a garage, and that's taxed separately, which according to our lawyer, if it was commercial, we shouldn't be paying separate taxes on our garages, which wouldn't make much of a difference, but it does.
But you receive, so you receive 28 tax bills from the county?
No, we don't.
One.
One, one tax bill for the 8.33 acres. But each of us, if we own a garage, we're taxed separately on that.
Understood.
Yep. And when we were formed in 1962, we were formed as a nonprofit corporation under the mobile home law of A 1499 or something, C 1499A. But if you, I don't know if you have a copy, our lawyer presented our treasurer's report for the last year. We don't, we don't take in that much money, we don't, we don't charge anything. We only have 28 mobile homes. If we were a mobile home corporation, we'd probably have three times that, and they'd be a lot closer. And yeah, we could charge people $300 a month, like some of the other ones do, and pay eight or 10 or $20,000 in taxes. Ours is $8,222 now. For, and you have to be 55 and retired to live there. We're, 99% of us on fixed incomes.
Well, that's $8,000 for 28 homes.
Pardon?
That's $8,000 total for 28 homes.
Eight thousand, 200, it's right around $8,222 zoned residential. If it gets zoned to commercial or changed to commercial, I've asked what the, what the cost would be, but it has to, you kind of have to have a year in a timeframe, and my assumption is it would probably go up at least a third or, or more.
You had, you had said, when you first started speaking, that you went and talked to the Board of Adjustment?
For review.
Or Board of Review, excuse me?
Yes.
And they changed your classification back to residential, is that correct?
Yes. Either, either they did or the assessor did. I'm, I wasn't, our lawyer presented that case, and, and all I know, and, and I should have paid more of attention to it, is it was changed back to residential. But the, we're afraid that, that in the future, with the, the head assessor in Des Moines is, is sending letters to the assessors of Iowa that they want to commercialize so-called mobile home courts, which we pertain, ours is a retirement village authorized under the mobile home law, but we are a corporation for nonprofit.
Any, any other questions for applicant? I'm sorry, I'm trying to process it, and as I'm thinking about the property overall and its use, which is how the assessor, I believe, is looking at as well.
Yeah.
I look at it similar to a apartment building.
My lawyers suggested we are like a condo corporation.
You are, but you're not.
Yeah.
Because you don't, you don't each receive, and that's where my question of the individual tax bill came from, is you don't receive your own tax bill for each. With the condo, you would. You would each have your own tax bill, and then it's easier to look at it as a residential unit, where if you have an apartment building, a lot of them, some of them are condoed, but those that aren't receive one tax bill, and again, they're taxed as a commercial property.
Problem you're going to have is your conduit, then if you're not, if you're not considered a mobile home park.
Correct.
Then you won't be licensed, you'd be taxed individually. And I don't know if they're mobile homes or manufactured homes, but you could have a slew of problems then, because if they're mobile homes, you can't locate them in the city unless they're in a mobile home park. If they're manufactured homes, they would be taxed instead of licensed if they're not in a mobile home park.
But zoning's not going to change the primary use that...
Well, no, and, and the zoning ordinance was changed a number of years back to allow for, because there was a lot of people refinancing, and there had homes in industrially-zoned properties, the zoning ordinance was changed to state that existing residential uses in industrially-zoned areas would actually be considered as legal uses in those areas, and that way, you're refinancing or whatever, your house starts on fire and you have to rebuild, you could rebuild right in place. So they're actually considered legal uses, even though they're in an industrial district, because they were there before that portion of the ordinance changed. So there shouldn't be anything from a zoning standpoint that should harm what they're doing. I mean, it's really going to come down to the, I think, the state code definition with the assessor about the primary use. I don't think the zoning will matter if you rezon it, which is, while we're not, we're not trying to be combative, we don't, we don't think it'll matter, and our concern is by rezoning this residential, if, if the land next to it, if a project were to want to come there, much like residential people don't want to be next to industrial uses, a lot of new companies don't want to have residentially-zoned property next to them, because then they're concerned that they'll be out operating their equipment, and someone will call and say, hey, they're driving forklifts at 6:00 a.m., can you stop them? And they just don't want the conflict. And so we don't want to rezon the land and damage continued redevelopment of the area.
The only trouble is, in 1962, when we were there, when we were first there, there wasn't anything else there. And somewhere around 1969, from what I could discern from the research I did, that's when we got changed to M1, but we were the only ones there. United wasn't there. Sober or Ronin, they weren't there. I don't even believe Golden Acre or Green Acres Mobile Home Court was there. We were the first ones there. And then they come along in 69, nobody there remembers the rezoning, but they rezoned it over, we didn't even know.
Yeah, 1969, the city adopted its primary zoning ordinance, which is in play today, and they rezoned, or zoned the entire city at that time.
Yeah.
And that's when they would have done that.
Yeah, yeah.
You sent out notice?
What's that?
You sent out notice that time?
I wasn't born in 1969, but I would assume they would have went through either notice or some kind of a large publication in the paper and all that.
I was born, I was in the, I was in the United, I was in the United States Air Force at that time. And if I would have realized that I was going to someday be in Golden Acres, live long enough to own out there, I would have paid more of attention, but they changed it, we didn't know. You know, and, and I'm assuming that it was agricultural, in an agricultural area, and then it was zoned M1 without the people out there paying attention to it. And that put them, that put us in a bind now. You, you say the use doesn't make any difference. If it doesn't make a difference, then why did the assessor change us from one year to the next, from residential to commercial? We had to go to the Board of Review and, and ask them to change us back.
I mean, I'm guessing it does have something to do with the state code portion of how they classify mobile home parks. I don't think it matters that you zoned M1 there. I mean, because obviously, your zoning hasn't changed since 1969, so it wasn't because we just changed you to industrial, and then they changed the classification. It's been that way. I think it has to do with however they're defining mobile home parks going ahead.
And then they're, they're going to do that to all mobile home, mobile home courts, that they're, they're all going to be commercial now? Is that...
That would be my guess. I, we'd have to check at the other ones throughout the city to see how they're classified or how they have been, but...
But his...
Again, you're, you're saying you're not, you're saying that you're cooperative or something of that nature, or retirement, and...
Yeah, retirement cooperative.
I think that's your best argument going ahead to try and, and keep it as a residential.
See, I would think, and I'm not an attorney, I would think that legally, you've got a good precedence in that you have been charged residential all of these years, and now all of a sudden, it's being changed to commercial. Well, I would think that they have to show some proof as to, or give some evidence as to why, why all of a sudden, this is changing.
That's what we thought, too, but when we went, we, we did go to the review board, and they, and it got changed back to residential. But we're afraid that in the future, it'll get changed again. We were hoping that we could be defined as residential by the zoning commission, and then we wouldn't have to fight that every year.
So there's really nothing that we can do to help them? No?
No, they'd still potentially be fighting even if it was reasonable.
So I have an, I have an off-the-cuff question. Okay, what happens if we dissolve the corporation and want to be single? What would that do to our so-called zoning?
Your, your use would still be similar to what it is today, right? You just, you're just dissolving the corporation that holds that property?
Yes.
I think you'd continue to be taxed how you are. Unfortunately, right, it'd be, you know, you might end up with this fight every year with the Board of Review until they understand that you are a residential use. And maybe the assessor has a solution for it, but as Noel has suggested and other commission members have suggested, I don't, a rezon isn't the right answer. But I think it's more at the assessor's office, and maybe even up the state chain further than that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to this issue, to the rezon requests? Seeing none, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
This is Mihhe, I recommend denial for the, based on the following five reasons.
Motion to deny on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the rezon request, per staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
I don't know if anyone's still here for that. This is just a recommendation, so it'll be forwarded to the city council, probably in about three weeks, it would be, there'd be a hearing there, so you'd see it there at the next available Monday meeting, and then about three to four weeks after that, it'd be at the council for decision.
Next on our agenda is another public hearing. This one is a site plan amendment. Time is now 4:29. An request by Residential Development Partners LLC, Jim Ellis, for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of 12 new single-family homes on 3.19 acres generally located north of Eureka Street and east of Vermont Street, also known as Baltimore Field. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, and drawings was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 24, 2013." Can I get a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against the request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report, please.
This is Graham with staff. The applicants proposing the site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District at Baltimore Field, which would allow for the construction of 12 new single-family homes. Surrounding zoning, you have R2 One and Two Family Residence District to the north, south, and east, and then to the west, you have R3 Multiple Family Residence District, and C1 Commercial, Neighborhood Commercial District, which was the former Hy-Vee Grocery Store. Four of the lots would have frontage along Vermont Street. Eight of the lots would be located along an extension of Denver Street that would go north from Eureka, Eureka Street. There are no sidewalks located adjacent to this property. New sidewalks would be required as each of the lots developed. This property is zoned R1 RP, and it was rezoned to that back in April of 2011. Previously, the property was zoned R2 One and Two Family Residence District. The future land use map does designate this site for parks, open space, and schools. As this property is used as open spaces, the designation currently appears to be correct, although it could be updated to reflect the new use of the property. The request would be in conformance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The City of Waterloo did recently sell the property to the applicant, which was formerly an unused open space area. The city recently took steps to rezon a number of these open space areas in order to market them to residential developers, and it was rezoned from, I believe it was R2 to R1 RP. The city did this in order to protect the neighborhood and require any development to go through the site plan amendment process, to provide the city with plans on how the lots were going to develop, such as house style, number of stories... how the lots were going to develop, such as house style, number of stories, garages, et cetera. This also gives the public a chance to, for input into the proposed development. As I noted before, the applicant is proposing to develop 12 new single-family homes on this portion of property. Now, the homes would be a minimum of 1,100 square feet in size. Would have poured concrete basements, would have two-stall attached garages. Homes would be constructed with vinyl siding, with the potential option to add brick or rock along the bottom four feet. There would be two home designs proposed, a one-and-a-half story home and a ranch home. These are being proposed to better fit into the existing neighborhood, as a majority of the homes in this area are of the one-and-a-half story or ranch-style home design. The lots would vary slightly in size, ranging from 8,515 square feet to 10,700 square feet. They'd also have widths of approximately 75 feet. The R1 RP district has a minimum lot size requirement of 9,000 square foot per lot, as well as a 75-foot minimum lot width. The RP designation does allow for flexibility in its yard requirements, stating that the underlying zoning district in which the development is located shall not apply, except that the required yard shall be compatible and/or similar to adjacent properties provided around the boundary of the development. Now, the surrounding area is zoned R2, which has a minimum lot size requirement of 6,000 square feet and a lot width of only 50 feet. Therefore, it would appear that the proposed development wouldn't be compatible with adjacent properties. Given the fact that this area is zoned appropriately and has the necessary infrastructure to support this development, the proposed project would appear to be a good use of this otherwise vacant property and would be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the site plan amendment, as the request would have a positive impact on the area by developing a currently vacant property. Request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and would be a good infill development that would utilize existing utilities and services. And three, that the request would appear to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance, and then subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including parking, landscaping, drainage, floodplain regulations, et cetera. And two, that the submitted house designs are compatible and exceed the design features of existing homes to uplift and provide new excitement to the surrounding neighborhood.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, look to the audience for anybody who likes, like to speak for or against the site amendment.
Good afternoon, Commission. Ron Welper, 11:20 West Days. I am the representative for Ward Five, and so my question is probably more for staff than it is for, for the commission. When the, when the property was donated to the city by the school system, I had numerous calls of concern. And the night of the meeting, I don't know if you may remember, but we had standing room only here, people that were concerned. Now that we're in the planning stages, I've heard nothing. Nothing has been said about Baltimore Field. I had three contacts on Williston. They were only because of, I initiated them. You know, I did speak to Mr. Graham about the 250 feet that surrounds Williston Field, and I counted 51 parcels that probably should have been notified. On my list, there's only 21. I'm just concerned, has everyone been notified in regards to this meeting today? Anything different? When we go from 100 people to nothing, it's, concerns me.
This is Graham. You came into our office and informed us about that. I did look into it, and there was an error in the original notice that was sent out. Somehow, our mail merge system didn't quite catch all of them, but I did find out who did not get it out of the 250 foot and sent that out that, the very next day.
Okay.
So everyone within 250 feet did get notified.
Okay. Again, I'm surprised that I haven't heard anything from Baltimore Field as well. But, but anyway, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this issue?
My name is Jim Ellis with Residential Development Partners. My address is 126 Haynes Avenue in Waterloo here. I could address a little bit why we may or may not have more property owners. I do make it a point to attend the neighborhood association meeting for the Baltimore Field area every month to keep them up to date on the development of the property. So that may explain a little bit there. But that has been occurring through the last, I did miss the last meeting, but the previous four. And then our intention is to continue to go to those neighborhood association meetings every month to address concerns from the neighborhood as the property develops, so.
Thank you.
But I'm here also to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion, or the hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request, subject to the two conditions laid out by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to the staff conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another site plan amendment request. Time is now 4:38, and this is another request by Residential Partners Developer, Residential Development Partners LLC, for a site plan amendment to R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of five new single-family homes on 1.13 acres, generally bound by Williston Avenue, Pleasant Street, West Seventh Street, and Allen Street, also known as Williston Field. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, and drawings was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 24th, 2013." Could I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against the request, we ask that you come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address, the name of the commission. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
The applicant is proposing the site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District, which would allow for the construction of five new single-family homes at this site. Surrounding land uses and zoning, you got single-family, multifamily dwellings to the north, zoned R3 Multifamily District. Then to the south, you have single-family homes zoned R2. And then to the east and west, you have more single-family homes zoned R3. All five lots would face West Seventh Street and would have their driveways from West Seventh Street as well. West Seventh Street is classified as a local street. The request to construct the five new homes in this area would not appear to cause a negative impact on traffic conditions. Now, there is a sidewalk located along the west side of West Seventh Street, the north side of Pleasant Street, and the north and south sides of Williston Avenue. There are no sidewalks located along Allen Street. New sidewalks would be required along the new lots once the homes are developed. The property is located within the zone AO 100-year floodplain, as indicated by FEMA. The City of Waterloo has sent a detailed study of this area to FEMA in hopes of removing most of that zone AO floodplain designation from this area. If FEMA does not remove the property from the floodplain, then the homes would have to be constructed in accordance with the floodplain regulations found within the zoning ordinance. Same history with this property. The City of Waterloo did sell this to the applicant with the hopes of redeveloping it. All five of the proposed homes, as I noted, would face West Seventh Street. The same homes would have 1,100 square foot size, including the poured concrete basements and the two-stall attached garages. There would be two home designs being proposed at this site, a one-and-a-half story home and a two-story home. These are being proposed to better fit into that existing neighborhood, as a majority of the homes in this area are of the one-and-a-half story or two-story design. The lots would vary slightly in size, ranging from 97, 9,740 square feet to 9,970 square feet, and they would have widths ranging from 80 to 81 and a half feet. The RP, R1 RP has this 9,000 square foot minimum lot size, as well as 75-foot minimum lot width, and those requirements would appear to be met. And given the fact this area is zoned appropriately and has the necessary infrastructure to support this development, the proposed project would appear to be a good use of this otherwise vacant property and would be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the site plan amendment, as the request would have a positive impact on the area by developing a currently vacant property. Now, the request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and would be a good infill development. And the request would appear to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance and subject to the following conditions. One, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes. And two, that the submitted house designs are compatible and exceed the design features and extras of existing homes to uplift and provide new excitement to the surrounding neighborhood.
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request?
Ron Welper again. Williston Field is directly behind me, and I have to tell you that this is probably going to be the most missed green space in the city. This property is used pretty much every day by people playing soccer and basketball and whatnot. But I, I myself am not going to support it or oppose it. But the three people that I did have contact with did not wish for this to turn into a housing. Their fear was rental property. We understand that these are going to be owner-occupied homes to start with. They fear that eventually, because they're not a high-dollar home, that they could turn into rental property. And I don't know how you would stop that, but this is one of the concerns of, of the three people that did contact me, was they would rather see the green space than rental property. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else like to speak to the request? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion, motion, action.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the site plan amendment with the following conditions set by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another site plan amendment request. Time is now 4:44. The hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Hy-Vee, Inc. at 1422 Flameng Avenue for a site plan, site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 7,008 square foot addition to the existing grocery store to be used for a new Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 24th, 2013." Can I, can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Moved and.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report, please.
This is Western with staff. The redevelopment would appear to have a positive impact on the surrounding area, as it would help bring additional retail tenants to the crossroads area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the existing traffic patterns to the area. The existing pickup area on the western end of the current site has a large amount of green space. Existing pickup canopy would be removed, and the expansion would occur in this area with a new orientation of traffic movements on that end of the store, similar in flow direction as existing. The site is served by Flameng Drive as a local street, with nearby San Martin Drive classified as a minor arterial. All utilities serve the area and appear adequate. The proposed expansion would, expansion area would not appear to be in conflict with any easements or require any utility relocations. The amendment would be in performance with the classification of this area as commercial on the future land use map within the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan. No portion of the expansion area is located within the floodplain, as indicated by FEMA's flood insurance rate map. The site has been zoned S1 Shopping District since the adoption of the ordinance in 1969. The existing Hy-Vee Grocery Store was built in 1993. The green space area was left for potential expansion planning, which is now being requested. The submitted site plan shows a 7,008 square foot addition expansion onto the existing 62,330 square foot building for a new total building size of 69,338 square feet, Hy-Vee Foot, Hy-Vee Grocery Store and Wine and Spirits Building. The new expansion area will be accessible from the grocery store, as well as from the front or the north side of the building, or from the west side of the building, where parking, drive-up, and parking areas are being added to accommodate the traffic flow and additional parking requirements. The building changes and expansion area would be comprised of brick or precast banding split-face block portions, aluminum entrance framing with thermal glazing. The signage would be located directly over the top of the main grocery store entrance, whereas now it is centered in the middle of the building. And signage would be added on the new addition to signify the Wine and Spirits portion of the building. There would be a change in signage for videos, dry cleaning, and pharmacy as well, noting the new location of a drive-up pharmacy canopy with pneumatic tubes. The sidewalk orientation of the, of the front would accommodate the pharmacy drive-up as a dip towards the building, minimally impacting any existing parking. The overall site parking would retain the 422 parking stalls at a 6.1 stalls to 1,000 square feet ratio. The zoning ordinance only requires one stall per 300 feet, or an easy comparison of roughly 3.33 stalls per 1,000 square feet. So the site plan would appear to provide an abundance of parking. The setbacks are easily met for the addition, with 122.64 feet still available to the western property line. Some shrubs would be lost with the demolition of the former drive-up facility area, which are to be replaced with new shrubs, shrubs with the sidewalk realigning. No other landscaping is shown near the expansion area, though there are already a good number of mature trees along San Sarah Drive to the west, allowing for the remaining green, green space to be viewed again for future expansion. No other changes are shown for access to the overall site. Staff recommendation. Therefore, staff recommends the proposed plan to be approved for the following reasons. The plan is in conformance with the future land use map for this area. The site plan would appear to meet all the intentions of the S1 Shopping District regulations. The proposed amendment would appear beneficial to the commercial development of this area by increasing density, adding additional businesses, and allowing an existing business to expand. And based on the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to drainage, landscaping, et cetera.
Any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff?
Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
Mike Waller, 9115 Tanglewood Drive in Urbandale. Just here to represent Hy-Vee in case there are any questions.
Any questions for the applicant's representative?
I have a question regarding your drive-through. It looks to me like it's pretty shallow. Can you tell me how many cars it's going to allow for stacking purposes?
Well, typically, should be able to allow, we'd have one car stacking behind a second vehicle, so probably two stacking. I mean, we're really, that's going to be primarily just for the pharmacy drive-up.
Okay.
So we would not have the typical customer pickup for grocery items, as we do now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the request? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
This is Cox. Make a motion to approve the request. Mrs. Cox, make a motion to approve the request, subject to the one condition.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to the one staff condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another site plan amendment request. Time is now four fifty-two and at this time, the hearing is scheduled. It's a request by a Tuohatelle for a site plan amendment to the S-one Shopping District to allow for the construction of a new Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel located west of twenty-one twenty-seven La Porte Road. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against the request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. Members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report, please.
This is Grandma Staff. The applicant is requesting that the city amend the existing S-one site plan for the currently vacant property to allow for the construction of a new Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel. Now, the development of this vacant lot would appear to have a positive impact on the surrounding area as it would help bring additional commercial development to this area. The request would add additional traffic to the area, which could create the need to improve the nearby intersection of San Marnon Drive and La Porte Road due to the increase in traffic that this area may see. Now, the property is proposing one access under La Porte Road and one access under Crossroads Boulevard. All utilities do serve the area and appear adequate. There is a thirty-foot wide sanitary sewer easement along the east side of the property. The proposed site plan does take into account the easements in its design. The submitted site plan shows an eighty-one unit, four thousand, forty-eight thousand one hundred square foot hotel with a twelve thousand four hundred square foot footprint with eighty-two parking stalls. The hotel would be four stories in height and would have an indoor pool. Site plan shows a monument sign being located along La Porte Road as well. All signage would adhere to the zoning ordinance requirements for placement, size, et cetera. The site layout would place the building near La Porte Road with a parking lot showing eighty-two stalls, which would be located to the north and then to the west of the building. The ordinance requires one parking space for each unit, so the parking requirements would be met. The setbacks shown would appear to meet zoning ordinance requirements for front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks. Drainage and landscaping plans would need to be calculated, but would appear to meet the requirements and intent of the zoning ordinance. The site plan further shows an entrance along the north end of the property, along La Porte Road, as well as an entrance along the north end along Crossroads Boulevard. The entrance along La Porte Road would be split with Lot One of that recent plat in order to allow access to that lot, and an access easement would also allow access to Lot One through the parking lot near the access on a Crossroads Boulevard, as Lot One cannot get their own access from Crossroads Boulevard. There is a thirty-foot sanitary sewer easement shown along the south end of the property and the building would appear to be out of that easement area. A small amount of the parking area is shown within that easement, but parking areas are allowed within easements. Therefore, staff is recommending the site plan be approved as it is in conformance with the future land use map for this area. It is, would appear to meet all intentions of the S-one District Regulations, and the proposed amendment would appear beneficial to the development of this area by developing a vacant property, subject to the following condition, that the site, final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to drainage, landscaping, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? See none, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation with the conditions stipulated by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Oh, I don't have to go to you anymore. All right. Next item on the agenda is a request by Residential Development Partners LLC, Jim Melus again, for the twelve lot preliminary plat of Baltimore Field First Edition to allow for the construction of twelve new single-family homes generally located north of Eureka Street and east of Vermont Street. Staff report?
Grandma Staff, this is a request for the preliminary plat of Baltimore Field First Edition for the development of a twelve lot subdivision. The request would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the area is primarily, primarily residential in nature, consisting of primarily single-family homes. As noted earlier, four of the lots would have frontage along Vermont Street, eight of the lots would be located along that extension of Denver Street from Eureka Street. Property is zoned R-one RP planned, one and two family residence district. Now, the plat does show a six-inch water main extension coming south from Hawthorne Avenue along where New Denver Street would be located. This water main would serve the eight lots on the new extension of Denver Street. And then there's also an eight-inch sanitary sewer being proposed to be extended north from Eureka Street along the new extension of Denver Street to serve those eight lots. Otherwise, there is utilities within Vermont Street to serve the four lots along Vermont Street. The preliminary plat consists of twelve lots, which should be developed into single-family homes. The twelve lots to be platted totals three point one nine acres, with those lots ranging from eighty-five hundred square feet to ten thousand seven hundred square feet. They would also have widths of approximately seventy-five feet. The plat does show a tract A, which is sixty-foot in width, which would be dedicated to the City of Waterloo for the extension of Denver Street to, to serve eight of the lots. Also, the plat shows a tract B, which is a fifteen-foot wide strip of land located along the east end of the plat, which would be dedicated to the city in order to increase the size of the existing alley. We are taking that out. The alley that's, existing alley that's currently there is in the works to be vacated by the neighbors to the east along Baltimore Street. And so the, the applicant will revise the plat to get rid of that tract B and will just include that, I think, with the lots to the west there. Now, the plat does show the extension of Denver Street, which would connect it from Eureka Street to Hawthorne Avenue. This request is only to plat the south half of the property, so the road extension would stop halfway through the property. The plat does show a proposed forty-foot radius gravel turnaround for emergency vehicles. Now, the preliminary plat does appear to have all necessary information provided on it that the subdivision ordinance does require. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, as it would be in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. It is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and it would create an additional infill development site located within the primary growth area.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the plat request? See none, look to the commission for discussion or motion.
Mrs. Cox, make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the plat request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Next is a request by Residential Development Partners LLC for a five lot preliminary plat of Williston Field Edition to allow for the construction of five new single-family homes generally bound by Williston Avenue, Pleasant Street, West Seventh Street, and Allen Street. Staff report?
Okay, this is a request for the preliminary plat of Williston Field Edition for the development of a five lot subdivision. The request would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the area is primarily, primarily residential in nature, consisting of mostly single-family homes. The plat will have frontage along West Seventh Street, which is classified as a local street. Five new residential lots would add additional traffic to the area, but not enough to negatively, negatively impact the traffic conditions in the area. Property is zoned R-one RP. There's a thirty-six inch sanitary sewer located within West Seventh Street and a twenty-one inch sanitary sewer located within Allen Street. There's also a fifteen inch storm sewer located within Pleasant Street. There's a six-inch water main located within West Seventh Street and a twelve inch water main located within Williston Avenue. Water and sanitary service connections to each lot are being proposed off of West Seventh Street, and electric, gas, and communication lines are also shown within West Seventh Street. Now, there is an underground waterway that does run underneath Allen Street. It takes storm water from Bontrager and Liberty Parks, flows it into the Cedar River under the Sixth Street Bridge. The preliminary plat consists of five lots, which should be for single-family homes. Totals one point one three acres in size with lots ranging from nine thousand seven hundred and forty square feet to nine thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet, having widths ranging from eighty to eighty-one and a half feet. Both the size and width proposed would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the district that it's located in. Now, the plat does appear to have all necessary information provided on it that the subdivision ordinance requires. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, as it is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance. It can be served by existing utilities, and the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and the plat will create an additional infill development site within the primary growth area.
Any questions for staff? See none, anybody in the audience like to speak to this plat request? And then bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the preliminary plat.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the plat request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Next is a request by Ben Strickert and Steve Droste to plat twenty-seven point four nine acres into two lots zoned R-two, one and two family residence district to allow for the construction of two new single-family homes generally located east of one thousand Bishop Avenue. Staff report?
Zandera Staff, applicant has requested to split the lots, lot in question into two separate lots for the purpose of constructing two new single-family houses, along with detached accessory buildings on each lot. Proposed plat is zoned R-two, one and two family residence district and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding land uses included to the north vacant agricultural grounds, zoned A-one Agricultural District; south, single-family development, zoned R-two, one and two family residence district; to the east, some vacant development grounds, single-family residence, zoned R-two; to the west, single-family residence, zoned R-two. There is a twelve inch sanitary sewer that travels westward across the entire property from the intersection of Butler Avenue and Maywood Avenue, then turns northwesterly and connects with an eight inch sanitary sewer in Bishop Avenue. Sanitary sewer is located in an easement that ranges from twenty feet to eighty feet in size. There is also a twelve inch storm sewer located within the easement that also connects at the intersection of Butler Avenue and Maywood Avenue into an existing storm sewer. Towards the middle of the lot, there is a twenty-four inch storm sewer that runs north and south through a twenty-foot, foot, twenty-five foot wide easement. There is a six inch, there are six inch water mains in Mulberry Street, Archer Avenue, and Butler Avenues that could be extended westward and serve the proposed plat. Plat of survey consists of two parcels of land, each containing a total of thirteen point seven four four acres, which is located near the intersection of Maywood and Butler Avenues in the Maywood area of the city. North parcel of the plat is known as Parcel G, and the south parcel is known as Parcel F. Elevations are shown on the plat that range from eight hundred and eighty-two feet on the far north portion of Parcel G and eight hundred and sixty-two feet on the far southern portion of Parcel F. Also, a plat of survey, also on the plat of survey, the proposed houses are shown, each with an attached garage, along with a detached accessory structure shown in the front yards. Access to the properties would be gained through a fifty-foot wide private easement, twenty-five feet on each side of the property line, property line, property dividing the properties with a driveway to the Maywood Avenue area, or excuse me, Maywood Avenue where it intersects with Archer Avenue. It is staff's recommendation that the request for the plat of survey for the thirteen point, or excuse me, to plat two thirteen point seven four four acre lots be approved with the following reasons: Plat is in accordance with the intent of the subdivision ordinance; the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map, which classify this area as low-density residential and is designated as the primary growth area. Any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the plat request? See none, bring it to the commission for discussion or motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the plat request.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the plat request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Next is a special permit request. This is a request by Daniel Hagdorn for a special permit to establish a non-limit alcohol sales use on-premise consumption at eight fourteen La Porte Road, currently Pauli's, formerly, excuse me, formerly Pauli's Place and Fanatics. Staff report?
This is Schrader with staff. The applicant's proposing to open a bar and requests that be granted non-limited status, allowing them to have more than fifty percent of their sales be from the sale of alcohol. It would appear that the request would not have a negative impact on the area. The proposed non-limited establishment is located directly adjacent to residences to the west. However, the site has previously operated as a non-limited bar with no known issues with the residents to the west, although there is an exit door to the rear, to the rear property line and some parking area along that back property line adjacent to those residences. There is no existing screening from the residences to the west, and screening could be looked at as a requirement of approval. Staff does have some concern as it does not meet the setback requirements from protected uses that are located directly behind the proposed bar. However, the site has historically operated as a bar with no known issues with those uses. A condition of approval could require the screening to be added from the residences to the west. The location in question is a commercial location along La Porte Road, just west of Highway two eighteen. The zoning ordinance requires that a new non-limited alcohol sales use obtain special permit approval unless a location is located along a principal arterial and requires that they be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from a protected use, which includes residences, schools, churches, et cetera, and at least two hundred and fifty feet from any other non-limited establishment. The proposed location is along La Porte Road, adjacent to Highway two eighteen, but is not located along a principal arterial, therefore the special permit is required, and the proposed location is zero feet from residences, two hundred and fifty foot less than the required. This is measured from property line to property line, therefore a variance would be required. But the site is over two hundred and fifty feet from any other non-limited alcohol sales use. The property was originally operated as Pauli's Place, starting in nineteen eighty-five. In two thousand and eight, it became Fanatics and continued to operate as a non-limited alcohol sales use, but closed in September of two thousand and eleven and has not operated as an alcohol sales use since then. Because the site has not operated as an alcohol sales use for more than three months, all legal non-conforming status has been lost. The applicant currently owns and operates the bar called The Drunken Monkey at three oh seven West Fourth Street and is proposing to relocate the bar to the site in question. The property owner has noted that the building was built and equipped for essentially a single-purpose use as a bar, and noted that the site has actively been advertised for lease as a fully-equipped and operating bar since the previous bar closed in two thousand and eleven. The property owner also noted that recently the Board of Adjustment approved a similar request to allow a non-limited bar, Saks Neighborhood Bar and Grill, to locate at two thousand Hawthorne Avenue, despite being less than two hundred and fifty feet to another protected use and being too close to another non-limited alcohol sales use. However, the request is also similar to the request by Greg Steel Smith that was denied by the Board of Adjustment to allow a non-limited bar to locate in the existing strip mall located at nine hundred through nine twenty-eight La Porte Road, which is two buildings south of the property in question. The primary difference would be that the Steel Smith request was for a new bar in a location that had not historically been operated as a bar, but the Steel Smith request was also significantly more screened and a greater distance from adjoining residential. And the request is also similar to the request by Lance Dunn that was denied by the Board of Adjustment to allow a non-limited bar to locate at the site of the former Barney's at five oh one West Fourth Street, although that request was located in an alcohol sales use overlay district, whereas the current request and the other ones mentioned are not located in an overlay district. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the special permit to establish a non-limited alcohol sales use on-premise consumption and a variance to allow a non-limited alcohol sales use zero feet from a protected use, two hundred and fifty foot less than the minimum allowed, be approved, as the site is located in a commercial corridor adjacent to a highway and can be screened from adjoining residential uses, and subject to the following condition, that the west property line is effectively screened with a six-foot tall solid fence with a gate or gap allowed where access is provided to the property to the west.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the special permit request?
Chris Fishels, forty-nine oh one Millennium Drive.
Myself, the owner, the potential tenants here, just show our support of what we would, we're look, I mean, our support for the special permit being passed. So, any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer. Staff did a great job. I mean, the location's been established bar for over thirty years, so, you know, this gentleman here, Dan's been in operation for over five years, so I just wanted to, just we're here to support for it, so. Any questions for me?
Schrader with staff. On note, I passed out an additional set of information that the property owner provided. It kind of has a brief narration, then it has a map. The map's a little hard, the original was in color, the black and white's a little hard to read, hard to look at the property lines, but it's kind of showing that he does have the support of that property owner to the west, which is kind of the primary one that's adjoining. There's a couple others that adjoin for a little bit, but the one that adjoins the most is supporting the request.
Parking's in the front of this building, so there's no parking really established in the back, so it's quite a bit of distance from the residential housing back there. So, keep that in mind.
Bob Krog, fifteen fifty-nine Dakota Drive. So I think the situation's been well-described by staff, and also by Chris. The thing I would add, the neighbor in the back, who's the primary neighbor, his entire back lot backs up to the property, which is essentially an alley in the back. In two thousand and five, when they moved into the home, they contacted me to get an easement, because they have a garage in the very back of their property in a corner, and the only access, it goes right to the property line, and the only access is to come off my property. And I had no issue granting them an easement immediately, without question. And they've been good neighbors. And so I removed their snow, make sure they have access to their garage, coming off our property into, into that garage in the back lot. So, and interesting enough, in talking, getting to know those people, she has actually been there since nineteen fifty-eight, described the whole property back there as being a vineyard. They grew grapes back there. So they have a long history there, and very, very nice folks, and we get along well with, with the neighbor, and have not had a problem at all. I've never had a call from them in the twelve years that we've owned the property. So again, I think it's been described well. Pauli's Place, long-established, well-known, and right now the cooler is on, and has been since the door was locked from the last tenant. And so it's fully equipped, kitchen is new, and we would really like to get back in operation again. Any questions that I could address for the group?
I just like the transition of it being a vineyard to a place that would serve wine now.
Well, and it was interesting, because she was telling me, and I'm old enough to remember this, it was actually a state liquor store before it was Pauli's Place. Many of you won't remember that, but I do.
Or weren't born yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the special permit request? See none, bring it back to the commission?
This is Gustafson. One question that I had that I just bring back to when we voted for Saks Neighborhood Bar and Grill, and, you know, and that was an exception to the ordinance that we had passed, putting a moratorium in place. And now here we are again, being asked to give special permission, and they're citing the fact that, oh, by the way, you gave it for this other place, now we want it for us. And we're just going down this slippery slope, which was exactly how I saw it playing out when we, when you guys approved the Saks ordinance, or the Saks special permission. And I'm just really concerned that if we continue, I understand, you know, that this is a longstanding bar, that they've, the past owners have made lots of improvements, put money in everything else, but we have to stand up someplace and, and say, you know, we're supporting the ordinances that we actually passed and that are in place. Otherwise, what's the use of having them? So I'm just real concerned about us continuing to set a precedence that is totally against what we said we were going to do a year and a half ago, and that was that we weren't going to be continuing to provide these special permissions.
This is Anderson with staff, and I can just kind of tell you, from a staff recommendation standpoint, so going back to when the city council had concerns and wanted us to draft an ordinance on further restrictions on alcohol uses throughout the city, our primary focus was to take the alcohol-type establishments out of the residential neighborhoods. And of course, you know, anytime you're drafting a zoning ordinance, you have to draft a zoning ordinance for the whole city, and then when you get into the site-by-site work, you know, specific, sometimes it's difficult to have that, that citywide ordinance work on a site-by-site basis. I understand your concern, at the same time, we've tried to look at them individually as sites in, in, in kind of accordance with what was the overall goal, and that was to take those out of the residential areas. Continue, you know, it wasn't prohibition, we didn't want to eliminate everything, we wanted to keep them in the commercial-type corridors, and, you know, I think are, I think we've approved two and denied two, so it, we have looked at them, you know, or we've approved one and denied two. Recommended approval of this one, and really in looking at this one, we did look at, you know, the site layout for this, the, the parking is, is from the east, the residential's to the west, there's fencing there, so it is somewhat separated, even though it's at a zero-foot setback. It's not like a lot of, of bar patrons or users or customers should be going back to where the residential is, so we thought it was well-separated, laid out. Again, they're, they're on Laporte Road, which is right next to Highway two eighteen, so we thought that they had easy access in and out from the commercial area without going through residential areas. So that was how we made our recommendation, was looking at kind of the, the overall intent of, of getting them out of the residential areas and putting them into the commercial areas where we think they should go.
This is Morrison. I have a question. I think it was approximately April, we denied a request for someone wanting to go into Tanzmania as a nightclub, and some of the objections at the time were, in essence, trying to curtail bar hopping, that the neighborhood is already saturated, and that we were going to be encouraging intoxicated people walking in the neighborhood. And so I'm actually kind of thinking the same on terms of consistency. We said no to the last request in the same strip for a different set of reasons, that now we're looking at saying yes to this one. I'm kind of concerned about consistency.
And from a staff standpoint, we, we did recommend approval of that one as well, even though the board commissioned denied it.
I think the one thing, this is Whitehead, the one thing that I felt was different from Saks to the one in April, was Saks is primarily focused as being a food establishment. And, correct me if I'm wrong, they could have opened without our permit at that time, but they would have had to watch going over fifty percent on sales, right? So they could have operated Saks where the second location was just going to be a pure nightclub, instead of going in and being able to have food. And I guess I'll ask that to the applicant, is this a situation that is similar to Saks to where you'll have the bar and grill aspect and people can come in and have lunch? Okay.
And at this point, I mean, ultimately, we were, we were looking at that option of looking at fifty percent sales of liquor and food, and we were right on the boundary line, and we didn't want to open up business and be at that limitation of not knowing if we would be, so that's why we're here today, because we might, I mean, we might still fit that restriction of being at fifty percent both ways, so that's why we're here today to, to do it the right way. Because we might, I mean, we still have that possibility of opening, or he has that possibility of opening and being at that, but we're not sure at this point until we open, so.
This is Cox. I think it's, it's unfortunate, but the overall sentiment in the community is that we are all over the map on this ordinance. I've had a number of people come to me and asking, you know, why, why we're favoring one against the other, and I guess, because I've, I voted in favor of Saks and I voted against the Steel Smith one. And I think the reasoning that, that, that I'm using is, is the, given the history of the, of the property. So, it just seemed like over decades, how was the property being used? And so I'm going to support this one today, just given the history of the building. I don't believe that that, that Steel Smith location was used for decades as a, as a bar, and that's why we voted against that one. Seems like it also has support from the local residents, which is positive.
Any other comments? Look to anybody who's willing to make a motion?
This is Cox. Motion to approve the special permit request.
This is Morrison. I just have one more question. Would the previous applicant have any recourse, since we keep flip-flopping?
The Steel Smith one? They always have the ability to come back to the commission and request a reconsideration or a new application, regardless of what we would vote either way, but they always have that option.
So we have a motion on the floor for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think we'll do a roll call vote. Cox?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Gustafson?
No.
Mehe?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one. That will go on to Board of Adjustment for their review. Thanks.
Which is the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Next item on our agenda is a vacate request. This is a request by Larry Harm to vacate a thirty-foot wide strip of city-owned right-of-way to allow for the construction of a new garage in connection with the adjacent residence generally located west of five fifty-two West Parker Avenue.
Zandera Staff. Applicant is requesting to vacate that thirty-foot strip of right-of-way west of five fifty-two West Parker area. The proposed vacate is zoned R2, one and two family residence district, and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the ordinance. To the north is existing industrial development, zoned M2 heavy industrial. To the south is existing residential development, zoned R2 and R2 CZ. East is Broadway Street and an existing rail line, zoned M2, and to the west is existing residential development, zoned R2. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer located just to the south of the property in West Parker Street. There is no sanitary sewer, storm sewer, located in the piece of property requested to be vacated. There are no water lines located within the right-of-way in question. There is a large overhead electric line located in the area in question. Mid-American Energy Company has indicated that they would not, they would need to retain an easement over the entire vacate area in order to have access to maintain the power lines. Applicant wants to construct a new garage on the site in question. However, there, as noted, there is a large overhead electric line that runs through the area in question, northward and across Broadway Street. Staff has made contact with the Mid-American Energy Company, and they have indicated that utility easement would need to be retained over the entire portion requested to be vacated. If the request is approved and an easement is retained, and the applicant looks to construct a new garage, it may be necessary to determine if an encroachment agreement to construct the garage is needed. However, Mid-American has made it known that a new structure would not be permitted in the easement, and language would need to be inserted into the agreement that no structure or grading can occur within the easement. Typically, structures are not constructed under power lines due to the difficulty that they can create when trying to maintain the lines. It could, it would also could potentially create a safety concern if the line were to drop. However, staff is recommending at this time, at the request to vacate approximately zero point zero, point zero six five acres of right-of-way west of five fifty-two West Parker Street be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area, and subject to the condition that there is a retention of a utility easement over, under, and upon the area in question.
Any questions for staff? See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the vacate?
This is Gustafson. I do have a question. On the page that has the figures on it, I was wondering, how did we come up with asking one dollar for this property?
This is Anderson with staff. The asking price, going up above that, the first line notes that the asking price would be based on a dollar fifty-one per square foot, that's based on the assessed value of the abutting property, land only. That was four thousand two hundred dollars, then figuring in an estimate, and at this point, we'd, we'd have to get a better estimate moving ahead to council, but at this point, the, the estimate for building another twenty-four by twenty-four garage, I think we used ten thousand dollars or something would add in value by having a garage there. The sale of property policy for the City of Waterloo allows them to count future taxes on added taxable value against that asking price for up to eight years in the Kura area, which this is located within. So it would, it would pay off that four thousand two hundred dollar amount to allow them to offer one dollar, because they're adding taxable value and improvements to the city. Correct.
Please.
Larry Harm, five fifty-two West Parker. I understand there's an issue with Mid-America. There are no splices in that wire. They have, they, they have room to get to each pole, one on Broadway and one on the curb site. The only way they would need to work on that is if they were to drop the line. Now I would consider going to a smaller garage and give Mid-America more room. They could use more of the easement to twenty by twenty. So, that's it, you know? It's, I need a garage and City Waterloo needs tax money.
Anybody else like to speak to the request? And then bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion?
This is Mehe. I make a recommendation to approve the request to vacate with the conditions set forth by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vacate request, subject to the one staff condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries four to one. She surprised me. And the next item on our agenda is discussion. Staff have anything for us?
This is Schrader with staff. I would just note that the next regular meeting is on July second. It's close to the July fourth holiday, but at this point, it's, that's what we're planning to move forward with, so hopefully we can get a quorum.
Thank you. And after that, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.